Interviews in Yamara Danzo, you're first. You want to come up to the podium? I don't know if you know everybody. You know me, I'm Tiffany, this is Lee Pearman, and this is Ashton Fowler. And that's Mayor Jim Heidel. And we're gonna get started. Sorry for starting so late. So we're gonna start. The first question is, we want you to tell us a little bit about yourself. You can start with a little personal and then go into your professional.
Alright, so I'm Yamara Danzo. I'm a mother of two. I work in community health and I have been for twenty-two years. I'm sorry, I'm real nervous because I've never had this before, but I just, it's just a little bit. I enjoy going to churches, spending time with my family. And I guess through community health, I just really like helping people. That is definitely my passion, to help people. But, um, so, yeah, in the last twenty-two years, in community health, I've served in different roles. From supervision, building relationships with law enforcement, the judicial system, participating in things like the Children's Policy Council, and just really trying to be active in the community.
Okay, alright. So, um, what are the primary, um, what are the primary goals you would like to achieve as a member of the BOE?
Um, I would just like to be a part of the team and continue to, you know, help the success that I believe is already going on and make improvements as needed, you know, as they come apart.
Alright, so you, you mentioned you had two children. Just kind of going deeper into this. What is your stance on the current curriculum and instructional methods used in our school?
Um, I, I think they're great. I have a daughter who graduated from Silicones. She took a lot of math classes and things, and I think that she was pushed and, you know, and was able to achieve and meet her abilities. She's doing well today, you know. And I have a son who is just not getting started. So I started all over again. So I have a son who will be entering kindergarten.
What previous roles or experience, great resume, do you think have prepared you to work in the board of education?
I'm sorry, you said what?
Which role or experience do you think have prepared you the most for working with the board of education and your background?
I think, um, definitely working in the community and building those relationships, like I said, with the judicial system and law enforcement and things like that. And also just resources, linking individuals to resources. Um, I think that, you know, in the school, there would definitely be resources needed and things, and I think that I'm definitely good at that one.
What do you believe is the most pressing issues facing the Silicones Board of Education today?
I would probably say funding.
Say, um, funding?
Um, to make sure that our students do have this curriculum and tools needed to continue to be successful. And as well as, you know, making sure that our teachers are paid equivalent and, you know, make them stay and want to teach well.
Well, to piggyback off that, how would you address challenges such as budget constraints, standardized testing, and achievement gaps?
So, for me, I guess like in the past, you just have to know what your budget is, and then, you know, work from there. I guess it just all depends on, I mean, you have to see what's before you and what's, what's the goal that you're trying to achieve. Um, I know that I have, in, in previous, I've worked with two different budgets. Um, in my company, like one was seventy-five and one's currently like thirty-five, thirteen-five. Um, and you just know that what you're trying to achieve and what all you have to do with that budget to stay within. So I guess it just really depends. I mean, I can give you a specific, but it's basically knowing what your goal is and what you got to work with.
Well, following up on that, can you provide an example of a difficult decision you had to make in a previous role and how you handled it?
Which mean what budget? Or just any night?
Just maybe in your day-to-day job that you faced?
Well, okay, so then I guess, is...
It's a difficult decision you had to make and how you, how you dealt with it?
I'm trying to say like difficult decisions. I guess it would be like, um, whether or not, um, I guess commitment will be it because I do commitments. And sometimes we have multiple people waiting on beds and stuff. And so those are difficult decisions, like deciding who is the most needed, you know, and, and that. So I guess what we do then, or what I've done and my colleagues, what we do is kind of just, you know, that is a hard decision. How do you decide who needs one bed that you got open? Um, and what we do then is just kind of, um, just to decide on what was going on with each person. And I know you can't really just say who the most dangerous or not, but you just have to take what's before you and then try to make that decision. It don't ever make you feel good about it, but it's just, you have to take, you know, what behaviors are being, you know, who's the most dangerous to self or others and things of that nature.
Okay, alright. Yamara, do you have any questions for us? Well, we thank you for your time, and this is gonna be, um, put on the, what is it, June, June fourth meeting? June fourth meeting to be voted on, and you'll, you'll have your answers then.
Okay, so do I return that, or y'all just know?
You don't, you don't have to, if you're more than welcome.
We don't got anything to do with this appointment.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you can come back. We welcome you to come back. We hope you come back, but you don't have to. So if you, um, if you're chosen to be appointed to the BOE, um, someone will reach out to you and let you know and we'll get everything set up and scheduled.
And there, and there are a lot of applicants to be considered, so we appreciate your interest, and this is a very impressive resume.
Alright, well, thank you so much for, um, considering.
You'll get the email and the paper mail that we sent for you to be here. So will you get the same thing?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know, um, Alex, next on the list is Brittany Corrigan. Is Brittany here? You want to go ahead and get started, Brittany?
Yes!
Oh, come on in. How are you today, Brittany?
I'm good.
Can I hit you a little?
Yes.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce, um, uh, I'm Tiffany next. This is Lee Pearman, and this is Ashton Fowler. So, and this is Mayor James Heidel, Jim Heidel. I'm calling him DMJ.
I brought two more.
You can put it right here. And we'll be the ones that are steering.
Okay.
So we'll start out. Um, the first question, um, just want you to, well, you can start out. Just tell us a little bit about yourself. You can do, um, personal and then go into professional.
Okay, well, I am Brittany Corrigan. But I have been a teacher within Taltic County for six years. I was in Atlantic City for one year. I recently purchased blocks and flats. They care for us at Comer, so starting new adventure with that. And I do have two kids. They're involved in everything. Um, one does dance right here at the Southern Performance Dance Arts, and then he off, my other one also does drama. And then we do have the band. He is in, he'll go to high school next year, but he did March this year as an eighth grader.
So your kids are here in our, in, in Silicones City?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you retiring now that you bought the daycare?
I, I'm trying, but I, I just can't yet. They want me to be apprentice. No, seriously, um, I kind of wanted to move. Like I said, I've been in the school system. I do see kind of where our needs are, especially being a third grade teacher with this literacy law coming up. And I kind of want to start at the foundational moment of, hey, let's prepare, and then we'll move forward. So, yes.
So, um, what are the primary goals you would like to achieve if selected to be a member of the BOE?
I think my biggie is just meet the needs of every student. I know that's a tough saying, but I do think we need to prepare them in digital literacy. I think we also need to prepare them in just literacy and math in general. But also, I think we need to look at the students who are coming up, um, of what we need to do to prepare them to be college and career ready.
Well, what you saying that I just, there's just another question that goes along with that, so it's kind of just gonna get you to elaborate a little more. So what initiatives would you support to enhance digital literacy and integrate technology in classrooms?
I think the biggie is you gotta have a mix. Um, it cannot be all one, it cannot be the other. I do think sometimes you just need to have that straight, didactic teaching of in front of them, rules, regulations, the whole nine yards going on. But when they break out like into sections and centers and stations and stuff like that, that's when you can add your tech in. And I think sometimes tech is looked at like it might be a hindrance, but it's really not. We have videos that can record themselves, things like that. Um, I know TikTok is like the biggie now, but they do love it. And if I can get them reading a passage back to me, or showing their work, or just explaining their thinking, well, that's tech. And even with coding and things like that, so.
Um, impressive resume. What previous roles and responsibilities do you think have prepared you to actually be on the board?
A good bit. Um, I have served on many committees with the county. Um, I did teach my first year and a half in Atlantic City, and I just taught math. And then when I moved to the county, I switched straight to reading. But I have served on the budget committee. I have served on the security funds committee. I have served on the assessment committees. I have served on, um, posting back committees. And I think that's where a lot of it is having that insight of saying, hey, this is what our students need, this is what we need to do, would give me that insight. Um, I think a lot of the biggie, and I know, is the budget. Um, I have worked, I know Steve Marlon, he might not be here, but I have worked with him, um, with Allen Howard, writing plenty of grants, and even serving on that budget committee. It gave me insight to see, hey, there's a lot of grants out here. There's a lot of funding. We just have to secure those. So being able to work alongside and just kind of give an insight to that, I think would be very valuable.
Alright, so you kind of answered my first question, so I'll go to the second one. What is your stance on Silicones' current curriculum and instructional methods used in school?
Um, I will say, I did do my student teaching eight years ago at Pycris with two teachers. I did a third grade setting and I did a fifth grade setting, but I know they have changed over. But I think the biggie is the state. It is the state standards. At the end of the day, we got to go back to what the state is requiring us to do. I know A-CAP is the biggie right now with third grade, but it matches directly with standards. And I think curriculum is a resource, but you still have to kind of fill in what that needs to be done. Um, all of them meeting the needs, like I said, of individuality. And, um, just pulling every resource you can in. And sometimes it might look different in a classroom. It might, like I said, I, I'm kind of a believer in doing, hey, let's do thirty minutes of this, and then we can break down into small groups. We can give you stations. You might not necessarily be a great program, but you know what? You can do hands-on things like that, and that's preparing them to be career-ready as well. Um, I know I said college and career, but a lot of students are just going into two-year degrees, like, I'm for it. But we need to prepare them on both ends, and we also need to prepare them to be the twenty-first century. Um, but I do know the, um, the math curriculum, the big ideas math, um, I do love that because I have looked at it before. And everything that they do, they come in with a hands-on experience at the end, or a real-life situation at the end. So it's not just, let's do this problem, let's do this problem. It's giving them real-world applications. Same thing with the reading curriculum. Now, I did work myself with Openport this year, and I do think that is a big foundational program, because it's helping them just go back to the rules, spelling rules, language rules, comprehension rules, and then as they advance, they can, um, kind of build on those skills, because the foundational skills are what is important to me.
So what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing the, um, the Silicones BOE or school system today?
Honestly, I think it is student interest. Um, I think we have to get our learners back to believing in learning. I think we have to get them back interested in learning. I think that it comes with, kind of like I was saying, like with tech and other things, we have to be diverse in our learning. Um, not one size does not at all, and until we get back to that, then that's where we're kind of losing some learners. Um, I know I have, like I was telling you earlier, like with the garden grant and things like that, um, I have students who are not read on levels, but we can read a passage on gardens, and guess what? Then we can go out to the garden. I had one student grow some collard greens. That was like, you know, but you know what? He got to shine. So it's one of those, it's not awards day. He might not have got this, but he was so happy when he got to do his hands-on application, things like that. So I do think that's the pressing issue right now, is just individuality, and how do we get back to meeting the needs of individual students?
Well, Brittany, I have to say, it was a pleasure these, um, only ten to fifteen minutes we got with you, and thank you so much for your, um, your interest. And like, um, you said before, we do have six candidates to, um, to interview, and we're gonna make our decision on the June third?
Fourth.
Or June third or fourth meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then, um, once that decision has been, um, been made, I think they email you whether you're selected or not. I think so. So you'll get an answer on, um, is June third or?
Okay, and I didn't, I didn't earlier, but I would like to say, um, you know, I just in Atlantic City and I have been at Stanley. Um, so I have seen a little bit of the broad range of education, and that kind of comes where like my diverse background is coming from. Um, just to meet the needs of all students.
Okay, and then I forgot to ask you before I let you go as well. Do you have any questions for us? I'm sorry.
I think I do have it.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You take it. Blaine's up next. Did we see Blaine? I know we're a little, um, ahead of schedule. What about, um, Steve Hartzell? See? Okay. Wanna go ahead and go?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, you doing alright tonight?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good. Alright, so we're gonna, um, start the interview off. Um, I've been introducing us, so I'm gonna continue to do that. I'm Tiffany next. This is Lee Pearman. We got Nate Brewer here, and Ashton Fowler, and Mayor Jim Heidel. And we'll be the ones that send up your interview tonight. If you want to go ahead and get started, get you to just tell us a little bit about yourself. You can start off personally and go into your professional.
Okay. I'm Steve Hartzell. Uh, I grew up in Grebel, Alabama, a small old town in South Alabama near Montgomery. Uh, very similar to Silicones in size and educational, uh, situation and demographics. Um, I am the proud father of two children. I have a grown daughter who lives in the Hoover area. I have a son who attends Silicones High School. Uh, my wife is Tanya. She's employed by the school system here. Worked at Indian Valley for thirteen years, was the kindergarten teacher there, and then for two years was first grade teacher. And just this past, um, cement, or past August, became the librarian in Indian Valley. Uh, I am currently the director of pastoral care at Cusa Valley Medical Center, the chaplain for the hospital and for our hospice program.
Okay, alright. So let me, um, we'll get started with the next question. What are, um, what are your primary goals you would like to achieve if selected to be a member of the BOE?
You know, as a member of BOE and also as a parent and a husband of someone employed in the system, I think my goal is putting students first, seeing them become the very best students that they possibly can be. Watching them grow from kindergarten on up to high school, and then going out into the workforce, or to the military or to college, uh, being well-prepared for that, whether it's educationally or socially. Uh, I think it's very important for us to provide for them to be the best kids they can. I think funding is a major concern as well, and helping to raise funds for the school system, to provide not only teachers, but the technology, uh, the other equipment that the school system needs.
Okay, so to piggyback off of that, how would you address challenges such as budget constraints, standardized testing, and achievement gaps?
To me, that's gonna be a learning process for me. Um, I think continuing to work with the state, of course, in, in seeking out funding, uh, working within the grant system, trying to find grants that are available for teachers. Uh, my wife has applied for several grants, received a few along the way in her career. And so seeking out those opportunities to provide funding, not leave it totally only on the city council upon the people of Silicones, but looking for those outside funds that are available.
You've been very busy. You've got a very active resume, and I'm wondering if you can give us any examples of any difficult decisions you've had to make and, uh, and how you handle them?
Every day at the hospital can be a difficult decision for me. I think when my daughter was younger, we were living in Virginia at the time, and I was very active in her school system. Um, I became the vice chairman and the chair of advisory council for her elementary school. Uh, I was placed on the boundary committee. The area was growing very fast by leaps and bounds outside the Washington DC area. And I was placed on the boundary committee to help determine where the next school would be placed in the community. That was a very political decision, a hard decision, kids being moved from one school to another, being moved from their neighborhood to an adjacent neighborhood kind of thing. So it was very difficult, uh, dealing with parents who were irate over their kids not getting to stay in the same school they'd always been in. Um, and you just deal with each person one by one. Uh, you deal with each situation as it came up. You answer the questions as they're asked. You're honest with them. You maintain your integrity and say the same thing each time you're asked. And so, um, I think those would be some of the difficult things in the educational system where I've been involved. Um, and just, like I said, being a person of integrity, answering it honestly, and trying to find the right solution for the whole.
Alright, so, um, what's your stance on the current curriculum we have and the instructional methods used in school?
I think, that's a loaded question for the husband of a teacher. Uh, I, I think overall it's very good. Um, I will use my son. He started in first grade here and has made it now through the tenth grade. Um, been very impressive with the standards that are being set for him. He's now in the honors program. He's in the dual enrollment. Uh, he's in AP classes, and so he's constantly being challenged to, uh, do better, to, and to increase his, um, uh, his intellect, uh, to press himself. So I think it's all good in that regard. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I wish we had more teachers, a larger teacher pool. I wish we had less access kinds of classes where we're doing online training. He's just finished up Spanish, for example, and, uh, there is no Spanish teacher at Silicones High School, and so they've had to do that through a computer system. He's done well with that, but nothing like having hands-on, uh, education. So I think for the most part, very good. Uh, the teachers have been outstanding, uh, for him, each one. I could go back and start naming names. Been excellent for him. Uh, but I do think now that he's in high school, there's some limitations just due to teacher shortage that I'd love to see us address.
Just listening to, um, what you just said, um, I wanted to ask you, what do you believe is the most pressing issues facing the Silicones school system or the, um, BOE today?
I, I think teacher shortages would be one. Um, I went to the strategic planning meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the presenter said that within the next year to two years in the state of Alabama, there will be an extreme teacher shortage. This is not just Silicones, but all across the state of Alabama. He indicated there would be a large number of retire, retirements coming in the next couple of years. That's a grave concern to me. We're losing quality people to retirement. We're also losing a lot of teachers to just attrition. They're leaving, going to other school districts. Maybe they pay more, maybe they're burnt out. I don't know those answers. Uh, but I would definitely love to see us work on the, the retaining of quality educators in our community that can make a huge difference in the lives of our children.
Well, do you have any questions for us?
No, I think you, I've already know the date, so I know when that's coming.
Well, thank you so much for your time and your interest to be considered, um, for this position. And again, I'll just reiterate, we do have, um, six total to, um, interview, and you'll, um, everybody will get an answer on the June third, fourth meeting?
Fourth.
Third, fourth, fourth meeting.
Okay.
I'll get it right in a minute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, um, is Blaine here yet? One more, one? Alright, so Blaine, you doing alright tonight?
I'm good.
We're just having a little squabble over Dr. Pepper. They say they taste like regular Dr. Pepper.
They do.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, we're gonna start off, um, with the first question. We want you to tell us a little bit about yourself. You can start personal and then go into your profession.
Sure. Um, my name is Blaine Green. I have, uh, been a citizen of Silicones my entire life, forty years. Um, my wife and I, seventy. I've been married for twenty years. We have three daughters, two of which are school age and in the system now, one will be in the system before much longer. Um, I work for Purcell Farms. I'm the director of people development there. Like I said, been here my whole life. Excited to be in Silicones. Have a great community, and I'm just excited to be a part of it.
Okay, so going to the next question. What are the primary goals you would like to achieve if selected to be a member of the BOE?
Sure. I think, um, for me, some of the things that I'd like to help achieve is, number one, making the system as strong as it can be. Um, working with the current board members that are there, um, listening to the feedback from the teachers, um, some from the students, see what we can improve, see what we can make better, so that the system can be the best it can be.
Okay, Ashton?
How would you address challenges like budget constraints, standardized testing, and achievement gaps?
So, um, for me, I think it's working closely with the other board members, working closely with the central office, the staff that's there. Um, it's, it's not always great to talk about cuts, but seeing that there's places that you can. But if not, find other creative ways to, to make the budget stretch and do what you need it to do. You know, we can always be creative when we do that. Um, as far as standardized test, standardized testing, it's just making sure that, um, the students are equipped with the best teachers that we can get, that know the material, that know what they need to cover, to know how to get them to where they need to be.
How would you, uh, what other roles and experiences have prepared you for a board of education role?
So I do serve on one of the board now, the Parks and Recreation Board, so I know how to work well with other members of that. We're not always gonna agree on things, but it's coming together collectively as a team to make sure that we're putting the priorities that were given first, I think, the students for this board and the teachers. Um, but it would, it would benefit all of us to make sure that we work together. So, one of the things that's also helped me prepare for that is in my role at Purcell Farms, managing people, knowing how to work with people, knowing how to learn, um, different people and what works best for them.
What you saying that, Blaine, I'm gonna ask this question. Um, how would you handle disagreements or conflicts that arise within the board members?
So, this hasn't really ever happened with our board. Um, like I said, we don't always agree on everything, but it's never been anything that, um, comes to just a halt for us. But, once again, I think it's just talking it out, talking with each other, understanding what the differences are, differences are. What my differences may be, your opinions, and let's come together as a group to make sure that, at the end of the day, nothing's personal. None of the decisions you make are personal, but it's decisions that are gonna help the school system the best.
Okay, uh, my last question is, what's your stance on the current curriculum, uh, instructional methods and instructional methods used?
Okay, so, um, having two daughters in the system now, um, and seeing what they work with every day, what they're tasked with. The curriculum is, is a good curriculum. Is there times or things that could be improved on, of course. Everything can be. Um, but the curriculum itself is, is challenging. I have helped my girls and some of them, like, oh, they're gonna have to help me understand this too. So I know that they are being challenged. Um, I think one of the things is making sure that we're blending the learning with the technology the best we can, how it advances and how it moves. So, um, I think that's one of the things we need to look at too, is making sure that everything is not just in front of that Chromebook, but some of it is hands-on, real instruction from the teachers.
So what, um, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing, uh, Silicones school system or the BOE right now?
I would have to agree with what Mr. Hartzell said. We do have a shortage. My wife is, she teaches in another system. Um, so I know that they have shortages. Um, and I want to use substitutes for these teachers to be able to have the time to do the, um, learning that they need, the continuing education they need, so we need more substitutes as well. Um, but just making sure that the, the system- But just making sure that the, the system has the money that they need, the resources they need, so that they can continue to currently develop the students.
Alright, do you have any questions for us, Blaine?
Yeah.
Alright, well, we wanna thank you for coming out and thank you so much for your interest in applying to be on the BOE. I don't know if you heard, but I've said this a few times. We're gonna, a decision will be made on the June 4th meeting. And we can let everybody know whether they get appointed or not, right? So you'll get something whether you get appointed or not.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, boy.
Alright, so next, I know we're still a little ahead of schedule, is Mr. John Parrish here?
Yes, please.
Oh, well, come on down. You doing alright tonight, Mr. Parrish?
Doing well, how are you?
Good. Pretty good. I wanna thank you so much for coming out and we'll get the first question started. Once you just, well, not the first question, I guess like an introduction, I want you to tell us a little about yourself personally, you can go into professional.
Okay, my name is John Parrish and I have lived in Solocaga since my graduate internship with Avondale in 1988. Returned in 1989, worked for Avondale Mills for 17 years, 13 of that in human resources. When Avondale closed, moved to open the Home Depot in Oxford, and then returned 14 months later in human resources at NIMAC. And I remain there now, almost 17 years at NIMAC. Have been involved in the community over the last about eight years. Started with executive board for the Chamber of Commerce with a year as the president. The Solocaga City Schools Foundation, been on that over six years, and I'm finishing my two-year term as president. That will end at the end of June. Have been involved, of course, recently with the Industrial Development Board, the Career Tech Advisory Board for both Solocaga High School and Talladega County Schools at EB Comer. A lot of that is to get back to the community. I have three children that graduated from the Solocaga City School System. All have done well because of the education that they've received here. My youngest is about to start her senior year at AUM. Just feel motivated to apply for this position because of its impact on education and what it's done for my children. I wanna see that continue and progress and be better. Great education system is important for all of our employers, for recruitment and retention purposes, for our businesses. And also good school system will attract good teachers if they wanna be a part of that.
Well, thank you for that. I'm gonna pause a minute to let everybody know the reason Nate isn't saying anything. So Nate works for the school system, I don't want y'all to think he's just not saying anything or nothing. He's only here for moral support. So he works for the school system and he won't be weighing in on any decisions as far as his appointment. He's only here for moral support, so I'm sorry.
That's okay, I knew that though.
Alright, so on to the next question, Mr. Parrish. What are, what are your primary goals you would like to achieve if selected for this position?
Okay, so recently, there's been some improvements in the level of education at Solocaga City Schools. Dr. Eller announced the improvements in the reading scores as compared to the state averages, that the schools have done very well in that. And having that plan to advance education in different areas, I'd like us to continue to improve as compared to the states and the other school systems. I think that's important for the system, but for the students that are benefiting from that improved education. In the recent community conversations that was held, there were discussions of strengths and weaknesses of the system, but also basically if you had a magic wand, what would you do? And there was some brainstorming, and there was some, some individuals said, well, we don't have the money for that. But you gotta dream it, so that becomes the vision, so that in the future you can plan for it. Cause you're gonna have a one-year plan and you've got a five-year plan, but you gotta have something beyond that. And no, you may not have the resources today to have it. But it's gotta be on the horizon so you can look forward to try to achieve those things. And they, they may be new extracurricular programs that we don't have today, new academic programs, activities, performing arts centers, athletic facilities. Things that we can't do today, but we can start to lay the groundwork and figure out how do we get those things. Not much different than like the earth. Earth wasn't gonna happen overnight, but there had to be a vision for it, for it to fall in place.
Alright, John, how would you address challenges like budget constraints, standardized testing, and matching?
Well, budget constraints is something that we all face in business and, and the schools face that too. So certainly you've gotta look for the opportunities where you can save, so that you can put your resources to where they're really needed. The Board of Education will have a budget that they have to work with, but there's other resources. Dr. Rosado looks for potential grants and, and money that's available, and some of that is operating because of COVID programs. But there are other things out there like the school foundation. That's what we do, we are a fundraising organization that raises money to grant back to the teachers for the programs that they don't have the money for. And that's, that's totally what we're about at the foundation. So using those resources to try to fill the gaps for the things that we need that the regular budget money doesn't have. I just think you gotta be, look for all the potential resources out there.
So what's your stance on the current curriculum and instructional methods used?
And I, and I'm not truly familiar with exactly what's happening today, but I know that the methods that they're using are improving test scores in comparison to other individual school systems that are using the same tests. So I do feel like there, there's some improvement that's happening. I, I'd have to dig into it further to have a lot more firsthand knowledge to really give a educated response for that.
John, you're one of the busiest people I know, you've got a very full resume. You've been involved with the Solocaga City Schools Foundation for the last six years. So you have lots of different perspectives on, on things that can be directly related to momentum and inside information, it can be helpful. But what previous roles do you think prepare you for a, for a full board membership of something like this?
Okay, well, besides the school foundation, the involvement with schools and career tech programs and a lot of school programs is my HR background. Human resources, we're dealing with managers and associates. In the schools, we're dealing with teachers and students, different titles, but not a lot of difference. So we face a lot of similar things, we're hiring, we're terminating. We may have suspensions that we have to, to review, we may have conflicts that we have to review. In HR, we do those type of things every day, and we do a lot of other things too. But those things align very well, and I've been doing HR work since I graduated, so I have a lot of experience with that, that kind of flying interwol, such as a board member for a day.
What do you believe is the most pressing issue facing our Solocaga school system or our BOE today?
I think the system, you know, we heard about teacher shortage and I believe that's part of it. I think declining enrollment can be a big part of the problem too, because money is tied to enrollment. So if you have fewer students coming into the system, then there's less money, which compounds the problem. Because if there's less money, you have less money to put towards instructional materials, less to pay teachers. So looking for opportunities to have a good system that will recruit students to come in. I know the city at times has looked at annexation to increase population, that also can help enrollment too. So I think the combination of the teachers, but also the declining enrollment, it just compounds the problem.
Do you guys have any questions? Do you have any questions for us?
Come in.
Alright, well, I wanna thank you for, for coming out tonight. Thank you for your interest in applying, applying for the BOE. And we'll, everybody will get an answer at the June 4th meeting, the June 4th meeting. So you'll get notified either way, whether you're selected or not, we'll still notify you, but we want to encourage everybody to, you know, even if people aren't selected, please like, don't stop trying. We have so many things that we would like to have. People, I wish we could appoint everybody to everything, but we can't, so just thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Alright, we have one more of us, Cedric DeBardalven. Hey Cedric, how are you?
I'm good, and yourself?
Good, come on up. Alright, so we'll get it started, we'll, actually, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? You can start a little bit personal and go into professional.
Okay, great, I'm Cedric DeBardalven. I am a native of Solocaga, I've been here all my life. I went to Solocaga High School and I currently am the program director for a nonprofit organization. I operate out of three states now, Tennessee, Chicago, and Alabama. Also, I manage a ear piercing studio in my everyday line of work. So I tell people all the time, healthcare and retail management. And it's kinda how I deal with the, the background of it all and integrate it all. I have about five niece and nephews that are in the Solocaga City School System. A few others that have went through that I abandoned and took care of along the way. No, no kids of my own, I'm good on those right now, but I love the kids, I love all the kids in the community. And going to the school is like a big party for me, cause I get to see all of them and all of them know me in the school system. So from teachers and educators who've I've worked with over time. When Ms. Dace was in the school system before she left, I did a prom dress giveaway for any young lady that they selected that was less fortunate to be able to have what she needed for prom. And I did not want my face attached to it, so I used to just, I would go after school, drop off Roland Rex's dresses, let her select and go buy my business and I'd come back and pick them up. And so that was my, that's been my, kinda like my thing over time about giving back to our community. I've served for the Brown Foundation as their program director now. I was on their board first in 2014, became the program director about two years ago. And so I kept telling, it's two sisters, and I kept telling Tasha and Pamela, I was like, I gotta go back home, I gotta go back home. And so I saw this opportunity come up, and so I talked to them both and I was like, I think that I want to apply to be on the board in my hometown. I wanna give back in the community that Flourish gave so much to me. And so that's, that landed me here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. So we're gonna go on to the next question. What are the primary goals you would like to achieve if selected to be a member of the BOE?
When selected to be a member of the BOE, I speak that. I would just like to say, my primary goal is to help our school system grow, help it flourish, help to be able to bring our kids back into the community. Our kids have gotten away from the community, and a lot starts at home. We have to give love and love those kids so they'll love education, love coming to school, love the educators that love them, so that the respect level for the, from the educators is reciprocated from those kids. And we just want, I mean, we need to, we have to bring them back. We have to take, as members of the BOE, we have to be able to bring in our educators with love and compassion to, so we can bring our kids back in and to spark our system, to make our system grow and flourish more.
Alright, Cedric, how would you address challenges like budget constraints, standardized testing, and GBA gaps?
Budget constraints, if it was me addressing budget constraints, I would just say we would have to cut unnecessary, what we consider to be unnecessary, POC meetings, anything that is unnecessary to the system that we can cut without hindering our children's education. We wanna make sure that whatever we do to cut, we don't hinder the education, but we're able to function well and to, so we can continue to increase those scores and continue to have child development and have the kids growing in the community and keeping the community going and keeping the scores raising versus losing them from the budget cuts. So we just have to figure out ways through government funding, financial funding, grants, and we have to figure out those things. Once we get the, the budget from the board, we know what we have. But once we have our dream over here of what we need to flourish, we know what we need. Once you know what your need is, you have to come in the, in the middle of the happy medium and figure out, okay, this is what they need. This is our workaround to do it. As we said before, everybody's not gonna agree on everything, but once we sit down and take a, a vote to what we need, we get what we need to do and we start putting the work in and putting our feet on the ground to make it all work and flourish.
What previous roles and responsibilities and experiences do you think have prepared you for a position on the board of education?
I can definitely say my role on the board with Berta Brown and my role as their program director has been a, a challenging role over the last few years that has prepared me to have, for this seat on the board of education. We worked, we do a summer feeding program that I have been over since 2014 with the state, each state. So I have to travel each state and do, go to the trainings and all that. Last year, Alabama was cutting programs, cutting the feeding program, cutting backs and take backs. So we experienced that for the first time last year since we had the summer feeding program. We sat down, we had a meeting, and it was, what are we gonna do? What can we do? What do we need to do? We had our meeting, we came to the happy medium, what we will not do is let the kids start, let the kids go without. We worked with Birmingham, Birmingham City RICs Centers, we had about 11 RIC centers for kids that were in underprivileged areas, we were not gonna let them go without. We budgeted the money off of our own funding for a time while we worked and we stayed up, like, we were going home like two, three o'clock in the morning and then going to our regular full-time jobs to write grants, to get grants and funding, just to fund the program when the state even said we couldn't run it. We got the grants, got the grants awarded, we worked through the summer, we had to cut the program off because of course, we, the state's not giving any funding for what we needed. But we made it through the summer feeding program and made sure the kids got fed.
So one more from me, what's your stance on the current curriculum and instructional methods used in the system?
The current curriculum, I would say, there's always, there's always room for improvement in curriculum. It's a great curriculum, you ask people what school system you go to, you say Solocaga School System, it's state of the art, it's a state-of-the-art school system, right? So I'm a product of that school system, so I love it. Not to offend anybody else's school system, but it was my school system. So you have to be a true Solocaga high graduate to understand the school system.
Amen.
But you wanna improve the school system. Everything, everything has to evolve, we have to learn to, as a community, for our kids, we have to evolve. And it, it does not, you cannot stay the same person all the time and still make a difference in the school system to make it not grow. We have to evolve in, as individuals to make the school system grow.
So what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing our Solocaga school system or our BOE right now today?
I would say outside of educational and instruct, and administrative shortage, we have, I think we have a shortage of some, some instructors and some teachers who are lacking compassion, some teachers who are burned out. And I think as a, as a board, we need to figure out a happy medium, right? So we need to figure out a refresher for those teachers, a refresher for those kids. And maybe we, it takes us going into the school system, having meetings at the school systems with no teachers and just kids. Talking to the kids to see what they're saying, what they're wanting, listening to them, and seeing if we can make things change or make some things turn for them. We can't promise anything, but we can say we can listen to you and we can see what we can do on both ends. The teachers, the educators, the admin, because it's a pressing job dealing with kids every day. Especially, I mean, just think for some parents who have four or five kids. They can't attend to every homework assignment, every game. And a lot of times, some small things dealing with kids and education, it, it is at home, but they're, they don't have anybody to listen to them. And so we have to be able to be that person that they can talk to and care and, you know, they can say, okay, they came to the school system, they talked to us, and they feel, and they feel what we, what we feel. They feel our compassion of how we want them to grow, how we want them to flourish and go out in the world and be young adults. Because one day, those same kids will be applying for seats on the board. Those same kids will be kids that will sit on our city council. And if we wanna turn around and we want to continue to grow as a community and keep involvement, we have to pour into those same kids to flourish.
Thank you, Cedric. Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, no, no.
Well, thank you so much for coming out, thank you for your interest in applying on, for the BOE. As we told everybody, we had six interviews, you were our last interview tonight, we interviewed five other people. So the decision will be made on the June 4th meeting, and you'll get a letter whether you're selected or not. So you get a letter if you are selected and you still will know if you're not. So just expect that, well, did we send it out that night, Alex?
If it was true, we could be prepared. If you would like us to, we could, we prefer to wait till morning.
Cause I've already told everybody, it's gonna get it that night.
Sure, we can, I'm ready.
Alright, so we'll get it, we'll get everybody to that night on the decision that's made and that being made.
Thank you. Thank y'all for having me.
Thanks Cedric.
I should sit up here and sign and stuff on my own. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a quick bathroom break, let everybody.